Thank you.
Okay, we are live, I believe. Good morning, everyone. And this is the Lee County School District Workshop, May 3, 2019. And our first order of business is the Castaldi Reports, Franklin Park Elementary and Cypress Lake Middle. And please introduce yourselves as well. Did you guys get everything up that you needed?
Yep, we're ready to go. Good morning, Board members. Dr. Atkins, we're here to discuss and answer any questions you will have for the Castaldi Reports, which are being prepared and hopefully sent forward to the state. We briefed them both of the schools, Cypress Lake Middle and Franklin Parks Elementary, to the CAC Committee, and the CAC Committee has recommended moving forward with both schools. And with that, I have Charlie Gutickens, who is our consultant who prepared the Castaldi Reports. Part of his team are also the chairman of the CAC Committee. And Charlie will be presenting the briefings, and we'll both be answering any questions you may have for either school.
What I... I am Charlie Gutickens with RG Architects. You know, we're the firm contracted and who prepared the Castaldies for Franklin Park and Cypress Lake Middle. I put together, you know, a shortened version. You've seen the report, I'm sure, and the basic results. But to kind of go through what the report is, is a review, an evaluation, and a formula that dictates or allows you to evaluate what, you know, an education facility and where it stands, its remaining value, you know. And in this case, for these two schools, I'll start with Franklin Park. We found that they not only had outlived their usefulness, it's that, you know, designed and built in the 50s for Franklin Park, there's left a lot of, I'd say, sort of deficiencies. What we discovered and what we have looked at was that while the original school was in a place where it was probably ready to be razed, there are three new buildings that could have complicated a little bit. And I think that the real point of this is that, built in 1998, they're barely 20 years old. It was a cutoff point for things that you might want to raise. But the reason for raising the newer buildings, I think, and Scott and I have worked this out, is that they're intertwined, and when you take out the older parts of the school, you're left with these three newer parts. Those three schools would have, those three buildings would have to be conditioned during the process. They would, they are not sprinkled, they would have to be that. They would have... They also pose something of a, not a security threat, but in, and security is an issue here, you know. We want a compact enclosed space, and these three buildings, you know, fight against that. They also complicate the basic campus that is available for Franklin Park. I was, this is the site. Basic outline of what the school is. You see, in Franklin Park, the outlying buildings 14, 15, 16 are from 98. And those are the ones that are barely 20 years old, you know. So when you go to the state and say, geez, I'd like to raise a building that's barely 20, they would look at it rather hard. But in this case, I think we make the strong case that these buildings complicate the site to the extent that it would make it a much more expensive endeavor to put in a new school and leave those three.
I'm trying to integrate.
The study involved, you know, a fairly extensive look at what the existing school was. The formula's fairly straightforward. You take how many years it's been in use, what its remaining useful life is. That's 65 years is generally accepted version of how long a building is useful. And then you play that against the existing school, and you say, wow, you know, the thing was done in 1957, so it's only got like six years left, meaning that, you know, we're going to have to do something in six years in any event, you know, in terms of modernization. So in the case of Franklin Park, I'm going to go right to the heart of the matter. You see, the formula leads us to removing the, and raising the older buildings.
And what I'm... And just to give you a quick summary on, and this applies to both schools. We did this Castaldi for both schools over a year ago. And it was decided by the CAC Committee and by Dr. Atkins that we got another year on the age of those buildings that were done in the 90s. And that helps the formula calculation a certain amount. So we updated it, we charged RG with updating and revising the Castaldi Reports. And when we speak to leaving three buildings in place, and the assumption is that we're going to replace with our prototype design, trying to integrate our new prototype design and leave three buildings, two buildings in the middle of nowhere, and understand the construction process can take up to two years. So now you're providing temporary power and water and so forth for humidity control, fire alarm, burglar alarm, all those things inconveniently. And now you're stuck with trying to take new and wrap it around existing. And the cost of doing that, which Charlie also made a case in the Castaldi, might recommend, and we believe it does, that we raz the entire structure and just put our entire prototype there. Ultimately, we believe it'll be a cost savings. So that's how we're trying to sell this to the state, and that applies to both campuses.
And it will be, the process, and we've been involved in five or six of these things where you put together your report, you make the case that it's either modernization or raising the buildings, and send it on to the state, they review it, they send somebody down, and he and I and Scott go through every single room, and he makes his evaluation upon that. And we've had both things happen. In one case, they said, no, no, that building's too young, you can't get rid of it. And in that event, we kept the building, we gutted it completely, we re-roofed it, we attached it to the central energy plant, we sprinkled it. And in the event, it ended up costing almost as much as just a new building, getting rid of it, you know. So I think there's a strong case to be made in this event, especially Franklin Park, for buildings 14, 15, and 16 to be razed. And that's basically where we are with Franklin Park. I feel strongly about the removal of the existing buildings on that site and placing a new prototype.
Correct. The... Yes, do we have a question?
I'm just wondering, what do you think is the likelihood of success in terms of getting approval from the state? Can you posit, or...
We've done it before at Dunbar High School and also at Tice Elementary, and we did have success. We have heard that the review panel has a different component of people that are involved in those panels, and it's become much more difficult, and other districts have been realizing non-approvals of their requests. So basically, we send it in, and we'll be in communication with them, and hopefully, we can answer their questions and sell the formulas and our concepts and be successful. But that's, between now and about six months, that'll be the process that we'll be back and forth working with FDOE.
And is the alternative, exactly what was just stated, which is gutting the entire inside of the building?
The alternative is if they don't approve the Castaldi, I think the buildings are in a condition at this point where, yes, it would become a gut in update and renovation, which in itself can be very, very costly.
And would that, perhaps, Dr. Atkins, you can answer this question. Would that require the board to approve a change in how referendum dollars are spent? Because I believe it was a, we approved a rebuild, and a rebuild is different from renovation, right?
Yeah, it may be. I mean, that's something that I would be, I really feel I'd want to talk to Mr. Williams about. But certainly, it is a significant change from what we have been out there saying was our plan of action as it relates to these two buildings and the use of sales or referendum dollars.
Well, I think the spirit is the same.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other question?
Are we...
So then, does the state ever take into consideration input from the community?
There will be a point where I think if it looks like this is becoming a difficult sell, then I would be reaching out and with your support and the community to try and help send that home.
My question was, is, and I'm not sure about this, is any part of it stated as a historic building?
No, not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
We do have schools that are on the registry, the state registry. Alva being one, I believe Fort Myers Beach maybe, and a couple others. But I do not believe Franklin Parks or Cypress Lake are on a historic record.
So your overall recommendation is to raise and to rebuild?
The entire, for Franklin Parks, raise the entire campus. Now, they do go by numbers. So typically, when they do a Castaldi, whatever your student capacity was prior to the RAS, that's typically what they recommend to rebuild. So we'll also be recommending that we put our standard prototype in, and we'll have to work those numbers with our people that do planning and growth to try and get that approval for the, 1,000 is typically what we have in our prototypes elementary. And hopefully, the growth in that zone and whatever changes are made will help support that, and we can get their buy-in on that as well. But there is a potential we may have to take our prototype and shrink some of the capacity within that, which can be done in design.
And this question, I think, is for, well, for Dr. Atkins or whoever. On your report, the area that says requisite conditions for modernization, number two, is it impractical to distribute the pupil load of the school considered to nearby, adequate for nearby schools? And the answer is that nearby schools are at capacity. How would we do that?
Yeah, that's why, you know, we are recommending the rebuild of this particular school because we do not have the capacity within, you know, either zone that it was closely located to particularly Franklin Park. I mean, Franklin Park does have some proximity to the east zone, so you could do something similar to what you have going on at Dunbar High School. But since the south and the east zones, the majority of schools are at or near capacity, we would be looking for capacity, continued capacity at Franklin Park Elementary.
Well, while the build, if it's going to be razed, where do those children go? Are we talking portables or...
Yeah, there will be portables, depending on what site we choose. I have some concepts. I don't feel comfortable sharing them here. I'd like to share them with the superintendent first, but there's a, there's an area. But they will be in portables while the build continues. To give you an example, Tice Elementary would be a perfect example of, there was consideration of turning that building over for another ancillary-type facility. It was a true walking school, one of our largest, as is Franklin Parks. A true neighborhood school, and with the community support and the support of the board, I think that helps sell doing the Tice project and just not abandoning it or using it for other ancillary facilities. So I think that also applies here at Franklin, Franklin Park.
And we do have a history in the district of developing staging schools or schools that are, you know, using modular buildings where we temporarily house them as we're remodeling or renovating or rebuilding schools.
Okay. Other comments, questions? Anyone else? Any last comments, gentlemen?
Would you like to speak about Cypress Lake, or this pretty much the topics of...
I'm in on the Franklin Park. Okay. Yes, please move on to...
Well, Cypress Lake Middle, much, much the same in that sense. Maybe even a little less good. The school was renovated in the 90s, so portions of it are newer and therefore the same challenge presents itself. But basically, as we went through Cypress Lake, we were sort of surprised at the, at the sort of, at the, oh, bad things that were happening to them, you know. During heavy rains, and the administrative center had flooded. They had, you know, cleaned it and reset it, all kinds of issues with the HVAC and air circulation, those sort of things. It's an easy sell to say, well, the older portions should be razed. This leaves us, of course, with 9, 10, and 11. Let me get to the...
And the problem is, we have some severe grade issues that, from the school's inception, what the grades are, grades, what I mean by that is the elevation of the surrounding dirt in proximity to the buildings, aren't beneficial for that campus site. And they have a lot of flooding in the communication corridors back and forth between the pod buildings. And I believe the buildings in the 90s also don't support a good elevation. We typically now build our buildings at the 100-year flood elevation. It gives us some protection, it keeps some flooding from happening. And by leaving the old buildings there, they're at a specific grade, and it doesn't solve those issues for those existing buildings currently, so.
This is the overall site. You can see buildings 1 through 8 are the older pieces, renovated in the 90s. 9, 10, and 11 were added in that 90s renovation, 94. You can see, in this case, we're going to have a little bit more of an uphill battle to raise 9, 10, and 11. They are, you know, separated. You probably could replace, build a replacement school. You do have this issue of, well, the replacement school is now going to be modified to accommodate 9 and 10 for classrooms and labs. 11 is a gymnasium that's in fair condition, could be reused. Our recommendation for this school is the same. We feel that raising the site, in part, creates more problems than it solves. I think that for the long run, in the best interest of the district, removing the existing facilities, and we can make that case, would be the more attractive option. And over a period of time, would pay for, would be the less expensive option.
Correct. And to combine with that, those buildings are not per current code, and what I mean by that, energy code. So even though the structures are sound and usable, here we would have a remainder of the campus that would be up to current energy code, LED lighting, energy-efficient air conditioning fans and systems within there. And we'd have a portion of it that is not up to code. Now, we could certainly renovate that and bring it up, but there's a cost value. So when you take those cost values of updating it, plus the cost value of keeping them under air and power for a two-year build program, we think it's more beneficial to do an entire RAS.
Okay.
Okay.
And the same thing applies with the sprinkler system. The new buildings would be sprinkled, and we would therefore have to sprinkle the old ones, which, you know, is probably more than the new cost of, what, three bucks a foot for sprinkling. So the final recommendation and our finished part is take them down in total and rebuild with your prototype. I think that for the, that, I think, is the wise approach, the more prudent. Of course, you know, in any case, you're always going to be pushing back against, well, geez, you know, you're turning down buildings that are useful and therefore spending money over. But I think we make the strong case that that's not the best.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Any comments?
I just have one. I was just curious, because both of those properties seem to have a lot of extra property. Could you not build on that excess area and leave the school intact until that one's finished, and then move in, then tear it down?
We're going to look at all avenues. Cypress Lake, we already know we're going to have to commandeer some of the property out in the high school areas for portable complexes and so forth. Everything's possible. Franklin Parks is a little more of a challenge. Providing temporary bus loops, segregating the construction activity from an onboard school site and the noise. We're looking to try to do that, but until we physically lay it out and get to that next step, that's decisions to be made further down the road. And I would like, just in closing, I would like to say that we toured with the CAC both facilities, but in addition to that, the group from the APAGA audit also toured Cypress Lake. And their comments were, it's time. So I think that helps support it as well. And that's it. Any other questions?
Yes. I just want, I see Mr. Reynolds, who I believe is our Chair of Construction Advisory, in the audience. Is, did they approve this, or are they actually recommending to the board that we move forward with this?
They approved the submission of this to the superintendent, to the board, in recommending it be moved towards the state to get approval.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one question. As far as our capital spending plans, these two suggestions are in line with that. Does it create any change or any difference in what was planned out for capital dollars?
I can't really speak to finances, ma'am. That would be best answered, I think, by the Budget and Finance Division. I do know that the anticipation is to use the halfpenny sales tax revenue to help support that. Now, whether that be for straight payment, or whether that be the anticipated tax loans to help support that, like we're doing at Lehigh Edition and also at MMM initially. I do know that if we use the tax, we do have to fall under the rules of per-student station costs, which are extremely difficult and tight.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Have a great day. Good, Charlie. Good job.
Thanks.
Okay, we're going to move on to the superintendent's evaluation. And my comments at the beginning before I turn it over to Ms. McClure is that this is a workshop. There is no, there are no votes. There can be consensus. There are no decisions made, any type of decisions or whatever will be made in an action meeting, if that comes to it. This is discussion on, basically, we have the evaluation and it's done. And where do we go from here as far as forward, you know, things that we are expecting to happen in the future? And that's what this meeting is about. I know there's been a lot of hoopla in the community about it, but today, we are discussing the evaluation and moving forward to what we're going to do. I believe everyone received, I know that you received two different documents. The document that we're going to use is the one that is not filled in because that is the one that was sent out in a timely manner and also on our board docs. And there was not sufficient time to make any changes to that, so we will use the one that is... And Ms. McClure?
McClung, I'm sorry.
Yeah, any comment?
Yes, please. Okay, I have a comment to make on this, and this is for the information of the public. Just what Chair Gittens was referring to is that at 4:41 yesterday evening, we received a filled-in document which filled in a chart, basically, that was like the chart that we're about to see and filled in. And I sent, late last night, I sent board policy to the staff member who sent that to us. And this was a break in board policy this morning at, because it wasn't posted in a timely manner. And the public, as of 10:45 last night, had not been able to see this new chart that was filled in. And just FYI, the chart had been filled in, apparently, by one of the superintendent's employees. I take huge exception to that, and that's why I want to make this statement. I feel like as school board members, we have been cautioned by other members and the superintendent to, quote, "stay in our lane." And I am very concerned that a member of the staff, the direct cabinet of the superintendent, took it upon himself or herself to write what he or she thought were our comments. And I'm very glad that my policy statements were paid attention to, and also that we, as a board, will actually have the opportunity to talk about our words, what we meant, and really have a meaningful discussion rather than somebody else filling in our words, which quite frankly, were not reflective of some of the comments we had made. Thank you.
Yes. I appreciate the fact that you pointed out that there was a potential violation of policy here, but I do want to give you a little bit of historical background. And this is one of those situations where we can't know what you don't know. This is how it's always been done, which is not a good reason or a good excuse to continue that way. But this has been a practice of the board when it comes to superintendent evaluations since I've been on this board. It really is just a time savings thing. And the filling in of these categories is really just meant to save time. It wasn't meant to be a substantive thing. It was meant to prompt discussion and have discussion moving forward. So I appreciate your efforts based on past practice of the district. And I would also caution that direct communication or criticism of employees should be directed to the superintendent.
There were no criticisms of the employee?
I read it as a criticism.
I'm sorry. You gave me the history lesson. I'll tell you how I wrote this. I wrote it as, I didn't direct it to anyone. I addressed it to the entire board, to the superintendent. And all that it said was "board policy." It quoted the policy, and it gave the evidence of why the policy was not being followed. That was it. So don't misquote me, please.
Okay. Okay. I believe we all understand it was changed, and for the sake of time, which we do not have a lot of to do this process, go ahead and begin, please.
Thank you. Good morning, board members, and Dr. Atkins, and our new attorney representative. Very happy to have you here this morning. I'm Cindy McClung. My job today is to facilitate the conversation around the superintendent's evaluation. Because we are using a new instrument for the first time, I'd like to take just a couple of minutes to let our audience know about the process that was used to get us to this position. So the first step with our new tool was that the superintendent conducts a self-evaluation in each of four different areas of leadership. Then he presents documentation in the form of this binder of his accomplishments over the past three years, specifically the past year, that have moved the district forward in his estimation, which are representative of the work that he has performed. This was provided to the board, along with the documentation of those accomplishments, and then the board members reviewed that and had the opportunity to provide their own thoughts around that same work. Board members ranked, gave us a ranking on a scale of one to four for each area. Those scores were then compiled and calculated using a formula to determine an adjusted mean score for each of the four areas. From those scores, an overall weighted score was calculated. In this evaluation, that overall weighted score was a 2.854, which, in the rankings, is deemed an effective rating. The purpose of any evaluation is to consider the areas that need to be continued and strengthened based on the work that has been done, and also to continue, excuse me, to consider the areas which the board feels need improvement, and they would like to see an action plan around that area. That's our work for today. As was mentioned, we have a very short timeline in which to do that, so we are going to review each of the four areas, and then the goal is to move to that action plan of what do you need to see continued, and what do you need to see developed? Any questions about the process? Thank you. So I will open it up for educational leadership, which is Section 1.0. We'll begin with the strengths, and then we'll move to the opportunities. Or member comments? Yes, ma'am?
I guess my comment would be looking at the part that was filled in, that we're not using. Nevertheless, when I read it, I felt that it captured pretty much the essence of what was done or said by the various board members. So I guess I would like to know, from that particular list, what it is that we have not captured in terms of strengths. To be very honest, before this came out, I sat down this week and did this on my own, trying to combine all of the comments made by all of the board members to just get a general sense. And for all intents and purposes, with some very minor exceptions, I agreed with the summary. So I would suggest that we start with that summary, even though it is, it was presented in a format that violated policy in order to facilitate the discussion.
The first strength that was listed there were strong hires at the chief level. Any comments around that?
I, in my evaluation, one of the recommendations I had mentioned was, and I've spoken with the superintendent about it several times, about revisiting our organizational chart. And in my opinion, and based on corporate management experience, when there are holes in, as far as positions being missed, I mean, not filled, it's a good time to step back, to look at the whole big picture of the organizational chart, and to ask the question, do we need to just plug in and fill that position, or do we need to look at the whole organization and start to pull things apart? And this is a good time, because there's no one in this position. I had suggested in my recommendations about using a portion of the Six Sigma as far as there's a template for succession. I don't think the succession plan is as strong as it should be, because it's been a while, and we still haven't filled positions. So it is a concern for me.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. That's not a strength. So are we talking about opportunities and evidence, or are we talking about strengths?
So yes, the conversation was directed toward the strengths. And normally, when we are doing this, we have a second facilitator who is typing, which is usually me. And I'm quite aware that I am unable to type and talk at the same time, so I have asked Susan to be sure to take very clear notes on this, and she will move that to the opportunities area.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Other strengths. Okay, the next strength that was listed was the focus on the strategic plan. Comments around that?
I mean, I feel it unnecessary to repeat what I wrote in my evaluation. I just feel like that's a waste of time, so.
Thank you. And I appreciate that, as everyone has had time to read all of the comments that were in the evaluations. And this was intended as a general tool, not as a specific quote. Increased focus on the alignment of the curriculum, instruction, and assessment processes. And increased focus on the whole child and social, emotional learning.
So I suppose the only thing that I would say is that in my conversations with the superintendent, my individual meetings with him, we have talked about some of the initiatives that have come out of academic services, and some of them that have been prompted by state requirements. And I think although we have definitely had a strong effort to provide a framework, I think that the communication to the schools and to our teachers at the school levels, who would be responsible for implementing that, I think that the reality is that it is not happening district-wide. And I think that that has been one of my consistent issues that I felt needed improvement. So I, yes, there's been increased focus, but as far as then carrying it through and implementing it district-wide, I think there's some issues there that really need to be looked at, and that would probably be moved to the opportunities.
So as we move to the plan for what needs to be continued and strengthened, I hear you advocating that you would like to see that continued, but strengthened in the communication area.
Right. So when we have district initiatives, I think that there has to be a mechanism for us to be able to say that this is what we are required by the state to do, or this is what we are doing in our district as far as curriculum initiatives and that kind of thing. And that for it to be a district situation, and not to be up to the individual administration at the school to say, "Well, no, we don't want to do that," especially when it's something that we're required to do.
Thank you. Mrs. Morgan, you had a comment?
No, I was just going to say, okay, again, that's not a strength, it's an opportunity. So maybe we just ought to go to opportunities, since people agree on strengths, let's go to opportunities, because that seems to be what we want to discuss.
Okay. Are there any other strengths that need to be added before we move to the other side? Anything that was missed from your comments?
Well, I think the highest graduation rate in the history of Lee County. I think the decrease in achievement gaps. I think the increase in number of AP tests where students are scoring three or higher. I think the decrease in number of DA schools from 23 to 1, I think are all important in terms of educational leadership strengths.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, and I just want to agree with that. I think those are the things that are better listed as strengths, you know, because that's data with evidence that we have made some progress. And I think that we need to really focus on that, documenting all of those successes, so that then we can build on that and move forward.
Thank you.
And really, student-focused successes, that's.
Exactly. Okay. So we'll move over to the opportunities. The first opportunity that was listed was the decrease in turnover of personnel, that needs to decrease, the turnover of personnel, particularly at the executive level. Comments around that?
Well, I mean, I think I stated mine pretty much already to look at the hiring practices and the succession plan, and that definitely needs to be geared up. I think it's, I will mention this at this point, because I did mention it in my recommendations, that it has been stated in the community that the reason for the lack of staff and hiring is the fault of the board. There are some things that we possibly could have done differently. However, I would not take the onus upon the board as having staff. We need to have a tighter succession plan and have people ready to move into positions. And also, I've talked about how we attract people, how we, what is the process? And one of the things I think we need to do is to have that clear, what is the actual process that we use.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments? Yes, ma'am?
I would like to beg the board's indulgence in this area, because I do have some prepared comments that are rather lengthy, if I may. And I have struggled significantly in the past several days to determine how to approach this subject with this board. My first thought, as I read the comments in this specific area, were how does this help children? And I was unable to answer that question when I read the comments. I turned to trusted advisors in the community to determine how I should approach today's meeting, and as I told them about the activities of some of our board members in this regard, they were shocked. They were literally shocked. They had no idea what activities some board members are undertaking. And based on that counsel and my own sense of what is right, I have decided that morals, ethics, and transparency have to be my primary focus when I'm addressing the board on this issue. And as uncomfortable as it may be for all of us to hear what I am about to say, I can't continue to operate in the manner that we have been operating as a board. The bottom line is that Dr. Atkins is the CEO of a $1.5 billion operation that educates all children in Lee County, and in so doing, impacts all sectors of our community. As I read some of Dr. Atkins' evaluations, I got the impression that some of my colleagues are treating this $1.5 billion enterprise like a mom and pop shop. Dr. Atkins and his staff are professionals, and it's our responsibility to treat them as such. Dr. Atkins and his staff are fully capable of operating this $1.5 billion operation efficiently, effectively, and in many instances, very, very well, exceeding my expectations. Our responsibility to the students of Lee County is to be selfless, data-driven, and apolitical in our approach to governance. Our responsibilities are clearly defined in statute. We are to focus our data gathering on the bigger picture, not the fanciful agendas of a small handful of community agitators. There's a lot that goes on behind the scenes with this board that goes unnoticed by the public. There's a lack of transparency, if you will, in the manner in which this board conducts its business. I feel I have an ethical and moral responsibility to bring these matters to light so that the public fully understands the behavior of the people elected to look out for the best interests of children in Lee County. Recent investigative reports have revealed some alarming behavior by some members of this board. That behavior is central to the superintendent's evaluation. As I've mentioned at two previous meetings, a member of this board shared confidential information with the public in violation of the law, and without regard for the fact that the ensuing investigation could have been compromised. That is the skeleton of the story. The whole story is this, and these are just the facts. The board office received a letter from a man named T. Francell that accused an employee in our maintenance department of taking envelopes.
Okay. I'm going to stop you for one second and ask, how does that directly affect our process of doing the evaluation right now?
It goes directly to the ability to hire and retain employees. I asked for the board's indulgence. May I please continue?
If you'll get to the point and keep us on track.
I will.
Because time is of the essence.
The board office received a letter from a man named T. Francell that accused an employee in maintenance of taking envelopes filled with cash in exchange for awarding bids to the vendor that allegedly made the payments. Within hours of that letter being received by the board office, it was shared on social media. At a workshop meeting of the board shortly thereafter, some board members referred to the name of the author of the letter and the name of the company against whom allegations were made. This public discussion violated state law and opened the district to tremendous liability. Ultimately, the investigation found absolutely no basis in truth for the allegations in the T. Francell letter, and T. Francell himself denied ever writing the letter. Despite the board's constant drumbeat of transparency, no one has stepped forward to take responsibility or explain how this happened. Shortly thereafter, two maintenance employees came before the board at a public meeting, asking for whistleblower protection and revealing what they alleged to be discriminatory promotional practices in the maintenance department. Again, these are just the facts. The investigations into these allegations revealed that a member of this board met one of those employees at Coconut Point Mall on a weekend to conduct a tape-recorded interview with that employee.
We have a point of order.
I'm sorry, but I don't know how this is related to our agenda for today.
Again, I begged your indulgence, if you would allow me. In the next paragraph, I get directly to how this impacts this evaluation. The investigations into these allegations revealed the conduct of a tape-recorded interview, yet the investigation did not indicate whether the tape recording was legally obtained. The investigation further reveals that the same board member sent at least one tape-recorded interview to the Department of Professional Standards and Equity, and it revealed that the Department of Professional Standards and Equity reached out to that board member repeatedly for more information regarding the tape recording, and that board member failed to respond repeatedly. When the board member did respond, answers completely lacked substance in terms of providing the information sought, so that a thorough investigation could be completed. It is important to note, again, in the interest of transparency, that all of these investigations found no wrongdoing on the part of any employee in the school district of Lee County, and specifically no wrongdoing on the part of any employee in the maintenance department. In addition to these incidents, members of this board have publicly criticized employees in comments made from the dais and the recent public disparagement of our superintendent recommendation.
Hold on for one second, please.
Madam Chair, there has been, there was a point of order raised by a member regarding the relevance of the comments to the subject at hand. Obviously, the comments are relevant, but you are on a particular topic, which is the evaluation of the superintendent. And so if the chair believes that the comments are relevant to the evaluation of superintendent, the chair can allow the comments to continue, but if the chair or the board as a whole believes that they're not on point, then the board can seek to cut the comments off.
My concern is that we have a very short period of time. We have not gotten very far at all with this. This is a very important document. It's important to the superintendent, to the district, to staff, to everyone, and we owe it to everyone in the community to get through this whole process. Unfortunately, we don't even have all of the members here. I'm very concerned that, I understand where you're going with this, however, it's not germane at this point, in my opinion, and we, for the sake of time, we only had 45 minutes to do this. Comments?
Yes. So I think we need to stick to the agenda and get through the evaluation. It is not incumbent on us to sanction one another, first of all.
No, I'm not. I'm not.
But any discussion of some of the more detailed situations that may or may not have impacted that, I think we need to schedule for another time when we have time to do that. But we have an advertised agenda, and I think we need to stick to it today and get through this review of the evaluation process, and then table that for another opportunity.
All right. If I could just complete my comments by saying that you just indicated that the...
One second. We have one more comment.
I agree with Mrs. Fisher. We are discussing opportunities here. We're not discussing opportunities to... We're not discussing opportunities to indict from, you know, so to speak, indict in quotes, a fellow board member.
And I, and I have no intention of indicting a fellow board member. My point is that I believe that this criticism belongs on the board's self-evaluation document, not on the superintendent's evaluation.
Okay.
Because you, you just said that it, that public statements have been made with regard to hiring issues being the fault of the board. I believe that, that this behavior specifically puts the responsibility for hiring and the culture of the district on the shoulders of the board. I believe the superintendent has done everything within his power to, to buoy the morale of staff in the face of unrelenting, inappropriate attacks that are facilitated by board members.
Okay, okay. And I'm, and I'm going to stop you right quick.
Those are my comments.
What we were working on is going through the evaluation. We were on the part of recommendations for success and moving forward, and I think that's what we need to focus on. In my opinion, the evaluation is done. It's out there in the public, it's done, the review has been done, the scores are in. This is looking at where we go from here of the things that need to be done, like I mentioned, recommendations for success. We don't need to rehash anything that got us to the score and the evaluations that are there. It's a document that is done, it is in the vault, now we talk about moving forward. The discussion that you're having, I'm sorry, is basically how we got this score and how you may disagree with that. We're not at that point. We're at the point where each one of us have made our discussions and our decisions and put it down, the evaluation is done. We need to move on to where do we go from here? Yes, Ms. Morgan?
So, in that vein, let's talk about, in this particular category, assuming that we all agree with the opportunities and the strengths, what, what we should be doing. And here's my, here's, here are my thoughts in terms of development. We need to do workshops about these items. For example, we could do a workshop with HR using national, Florida, and local data, numbers entering and leaving the profession by race, by age, by profession, the Lee County School District process, the evidence of best practices to date used nationwide, and what thorns we have here. And if we have that workshop, then we're talking about this in a constructive way so that we understand what it is we're doing and have an opportunity to brainstorm with the superintendent and staff about where we're going. Secondly, with respect to the diversity issue, I would ask the diversity director to conduct a workshop with academic services, social workers, guidance counselors, talking about defining the problem with diversity in the district as it relates to academics, operations, et cetera. Explain the steps that the district has taken to date, what has worked and what isn't working, and what is it that the board can brainstorm in terms of a solution. So, I'm looking at the fact that, yes, all of this has been stated, it's public record, the public is looking at us to say, how are we going to respond to this in a positive way? And I believe that one of the problems this board has is that it doesn't talk in public, it doesn't work in public. And so, I have taken this as an opportunity to create, to throw out the ideas of very structured workshops that respond to specifically the concerns raised in opportunities. So, I would like to talk about where we go going forward.
And, and I will say to that comment, I did have a discussion yesterday with some staff about doing just that on the HR workshop, and we did discuss the data, the trends, and all of that, and I totally agree with you, and thank you for that comment. Next was Ms. Jordan had her hand up next.
I totally forgot what I was gonna say. I was just, I know what I was gonna say is that we do need to stay focused on what we're speaking on because I know that when we do speak, we do tend to get off track of the community said this or the community said that. We need to focus on what is written already and not what people are, have told us, but what we already have down here.
Okay. I mean, and the bottom line is the community is here, the community is watching, they are hearing what we're saying, so we need to move on. Yes, Ms.?
Okay, two things. First, I agree partially with what Ms. Morgan said. I agree specifically that we do need more workshops. However, I feel like she moved on to this final document, which is what shall we do next? I, for the sake of the public, because we have a blank document up there, I have things to add under opportunities and evidence. We have not finished 1.0 educational leadership opportunities.
No, we haven't. And I think the process was to go through them, each section, and then to look at 1.0, what are we going to put on there?
And so that you know what my process is right now, because we don't have someone typing up there, is that I'm taking the notes on when we get to that last page, what are some of those things that people are suggesting that we put down as next steps? Okay? So that when we get there. And you had some things that you would like to add.
Previously, there was an objection when opportunities were being verbalized when we were discussing strengths.
But we on, we are on opportunities now.
I understand. Do we need to add more opportunities?
So, if I could just very quickly read the ones that were, were agreed upon, decrease the turnover of personnel, particularly at the executive level, increase the percentage of minorities in the workforce, increase consistency of deployment of initiatives, and increase family engagement, particularly of minority families. And now I understand that you have some you would like to add to that.
Right. First of all, I would change the wording on increased percent of minorities in the workforce. We have plenty of minorities driving our buses and working in maintenance. Where we have a problem, as I see it, is our teaching staff, our administrative staffs in the school, and our cabinets. Twice in my evaluation, I specifically mentioned Hispanics. Hispanic population is our largest population, and it has the smallest representation of higher-level positions of professional positions. So, I object to workforce, it's too vague, and I would like to see more specific language here.
With the language instructional staff and exec, and administrative and executive positions, would that be sufficient?
I think that would be more, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other comments of things to add to that side?
Can I add something you don't even have on there?
Yes, please.
Okay. One of the problems that I, that I had is that I feel like often, too often, key positions are filled by individuals who lack minimum qualifications to effectively fulfill their job. Now, it's, I have examples, if anybody wants the specific examples, you can go into my evaluation because I listed six different specific examples, but I will just leave it to, that even goes to the point of, somebody mentioned diversity, and we need at least a couple more individuals, upper-level individuals dealing with diversity, since we are a majority-minority school district. A month or so ago, these two new positions were brought in front of the board, and we defeated those two positions and sent them back to the drawing board because what was being sent to us was a job description wanting to hire people who in the minimum qualifications didn't even need any training, experience, certification, or licenses.
Point of order.
Yes ma'am.
So, my concern is that you're reading what is already entered into evidences with respect to this. Is there a summary statement? A summary statement that would bring all that together, that would be a bullet on this item?
It's the first thing that I said, which was key positions filled by individuals who lack minimum qualifications to effectively fulfill their jobs. Thank you. That was my statement that I started with.
Thank you.
And I, can I just say, for, for keeping order and time, we have most of the evidence already. So, I agree with Ms. Morgan in that, that if we say something less challenged in some way, let's just give a statement and then we can move on.
Okay, and I, and I just want to summarize that for Betsy. Provide review of leadership positions for qualifications and experience in areas of assignment. I mean, I don't think we need to get into all of that, that's all out there. So, let's get to the point, and because we're running out of time.
And, and the other, the other point to that is, this to me is step one. We will need to have another meeting, a special meeting where we can have input and comments as well, when we take these items and create action statements.
Absolutely. Madam Chair, so thank you, that's our goal for today, so let's move on.
Okay.
I just have a question. To me, I know I might, I might not be interpreting this correctly, but to me that, do we need to relook at job descriptions? Because the hires that were made were within the confines of job descriptions, so I'm not sure what the action item is here, but we haven't even got to action.
I think process is what we were talking about with having the workshop that in, that gives us data, that gives us process, and talking with HR about how they do it will be helpful.
Okay. And so, I believe when we get to the, the action of a workshop, that we can discuss that. If we could move on to 2.0, and in the, for the sake of time, I'm going to read the strengths and ask if there are any additions to that. The strengths were the progress on the strategic plan, and some specific examples that were mentioned were the increased student achievement, increased number of A and B schools, decreased number of DA schools, innovative methods of communication with stakeholders, including the Peach Jar podcast and, and specific apps that are being used, and then the consensus work around the passage of the half penny sales tax referendum. Are there any additions on that side? Okay. On the opportunities, develop stronger, more professional relationships with some board members, improve consensus building with board members, and continue work on succession planning, including mentoring of staff. Before we add, is there consensus on those three items? Any, Ms. Bond?
I would revise on the wording, some board members, too vague. What does that mean, some board members? Are there particular board members? I, I would, I would say that because we're looking at the, the standard of whether there is, of whether there is collegial and collaborative efforts with the board, I would say, from my point of view, no. I would say that there are other members of the board that probably would say, yes, it's a strength, because what I've seen is agree, you're golden; disagree, not so golden.
I can tell you how that, how that statement was derived, because there were specific comments in some evaluations that said they did not have a collegial relationship. There were others who said they had a very collegial and satisfactory relationship. So, rather than name individuals, I put the word "some." That's where that came from. And Ms. Fisher did have the next comment.
Okay, so, may I say, let's strike the word "some," and just say board members.
And just go from there. Thank you. Any other comments?
That's what I was gonna ask.
Thank you. Okay. All right.
And I will, you know, I, I'm withholding some comments, but, but overall, I think something like that requires two individuals. So, while I understand the need for a comment, it is, it, relationship is about two people.
Thank you. Any additions to the opportunities for that area?
Well, I, I don't know, when I look at relationships, I think of communication. If it could be relationship, communication, you will have a different type of relationship with different people that you work with, but you have to communicate with all of them.
So, we could add the word professional relationships and stronger communication?
Yes.
I think that narrows it too much. Essentially, a relationship is not just communication, it's trust and respect. So, if there's transparency, trust, and respect, then you can have legitimate conversation. If you don't have those elements, then you, then you can have a conversation or communication, but it doesn't mean it, it's meaningless. And I think that's part of our problem.
So, it's, it, it comes down to the definition then of relationship?
Yeah, right.
And, okay, I, I will acquiesce to that because this is just the first big-picture view of this, and when we do the action steps, I'll add my others. Okay?
Thank you. We'll move on to section, whoops, not with that, move on to section 3.0. Whoops, there we go. 3.0 is community leadership. I apologize. In an earlier discussion, I, I had been asked to give the average mean score for each area, so I'll do that very quickly. The average mean score for leadership, for educational leadership, which was 1.0, was a 3.0. That was the strongest of the categories. The, the number for professional leadership was a 2.626, which actually was the lowest score, the one we just discussed. 3.0 community leadership is a 2.932. The strengths that were listed there were visible presence in the community, forming the executive roundtable, engagement of community in the half penny sales tax initiative, the memoranda of understanding, and there were specific ones listed there, and then weekly visits to schools. Yes ma'am?
I'd like to add partnership with other local governmental agencies. For instance, our largest city, Cape Coral, we've been having some real successful partnerships with them, and I think that's critically important.
Thank you. Mrs. Jordan?
Could we change that, where it says, presence in community, to Lee County? Because I believe that he is everywhere, because I know on the other side it says community interaction, more inclusive. So, I believe that he is all over Lee County.
Okay. Okay. Okay, we'll move to the opportunities. Broaden community interactions to be more inclusive of all seg, more inclusive of all segments of our community, and develop ways to solicit input from all areas or segments of the community. Comments or additions? Yes ma'am?
Yeah, and I, I believe actually, this is strong, this is a strong area. However, all segments, I, I really want to go back again to the segments that are missing as, as far as I'm concerned. I've viewed the way, when we go out as a board and talk with the people who don't usually show up, and, and that's the problem. I'm not sure how we can, you know, fix up that language, but we have the people that always show up, and, and we're very pleased and happy for that. But, we have a lot of people who don't show up. We have, we've had, what was it, workshops or forums in the community where three people come, and those are the people that we have to learn how to engage with them. So, if we could put, and, and maybe this would just go as a note and go into our last part, moving ahead.
Yes ma'am.
But, to me, that, that is the area where we, maybe all of us fall down, that's the most difficult area.
Thank you. Any additions to 3.0? And the last area is executive leadership. The rating on that was 2.858. The strengths included integration of advanced technological capabilities, and there were specific examples listed in the evaluations, work of staff to implement safety and mental health measures, and the implementation of continuous improvement in the lean Six Sigma model. Comments or additions? Okay, seeing none, I'll move over to the opportunities. Increase consistency of compliance with regulations and implementation of district initiatives. Build a culture of openness and support, and improve consistency and timeliness of communications. Any additions there?
Um, one second. How do we get the word transparency in there? Or do we, or is that, is that the, in the next steps?
That's the culture of openness and support.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna do a quick time check, so excuse me. Okay, we're already at our 40 minutes. We have, but, so I will, I will ask for direction. We are now at 10:08. We, we did not start on, on time, but I believe we started by 9:30, which would give us approximately which would give us approximately five minutes. I can provide you with my notes on where I believe you have determined strengths that you want to continue, and where you have indicated today that you want to see some action plans, probably in the form of a workshop. We start there, on the next steps?
Yes, I mean, that...
Let's start there.
Comments from anyone else?
I have an additional next step I'd like to add.
Yes.
Going forward, I'd like to increase governance team training in the area of board responsibility versus superintendent's responsibilities and ethics.
So you're suggesting that in our next steps?
Correct.
Correct, okay. So one of the first things I hear is that we would like additional training for the board as a whole?
Well, the superintendent is part of the governance team.
Including, yes, obviously, yes, including superintendent, okay. And I'm going to just do a quick, and I know the thumbs up can sometimes, but a quick consensus on, are we in agreement of adding that as a next step? Additional training for board?
Okay.
I see thumbs up. Okay, so Susan will add that to the list, thank you. Starting with 1.0, the first thing that I heard was that you would like to see continued but strengthened is the social emotional piece. Would like to see some additional communication around that, a consistency. So you'd like to see a plan for that, is that correct? Okay. I'm going to flip back here. In the strengths, we saw the strong hires, the focus on the strategic plan, and the increased focus on the alignment of the curriculum instruction assessment. Would it be safe to say you would like to see those things continue?
Yes.
Yes.
Things I heard you would like to have a workshop around in order to come forward with another plan were around the hiring process?
My question here, though, the two workshops that I wrote down were the HR and the diversity workshops.
Yes.
Are those, and I can ask Ms. Morgan this, were those not directed more towards us as opposed to this document as to what the superintendent needs to do? Because we can't direct him until we have that information.
Correct.
So rather than put that on here as what he has to do, we need to know what to ask him to do, so we need to do the workshop.
Yeah, but that's our next step as a board, is to have a workshop. The goal would be to, if we feel the need, at the end of the workshop, direct the superintendent to take whatever steps.
Right, but what I'm saying is, this document, in my impression, is the continue and develop is based on the superintendent, not on us.
And I believe what we've moved into is sort of a dual document, because there may be some things that you say right now, we know we want to direct the superintendent to do this, but what I heard was a need for further evaluation in this particular...
Exactly, for us, and not necessarily a direction for him.
Right, it would be a next step for the board.
Exactly.
Okay. Do I see a hand?
I don't know.
Yes, it was my hand.
Which is a hand.
So I think that what we need to do is to, looking at the opportunities, we do need to develop some clear priorities, give the superintendent direction with a timeline and benchmarks, but before we do that, and this is what I think I heard Mrs. Patrica say, we need to make sure, right now we're on a seesaw as a board, and so we need to make sure that there's a clear understanding about what our function is as board members. Individual board members, and I've said this before, don't make those decisions. We have got to work together. So whatever it takes, and obviously it's going to take a little bit more training so that everybody can understand what their part of it is, and agree to come on board. So I think that that would be the next step, is for us to have that additional look at what our responsibilities are, and then move forward to provide the superintendent with clear direction about those opportunities.
Mrs. Vaughn?
First of all, I think we already have the training on the books. I haven't seen anything moving forward. But secondly, while I appreciate Ms. Fisher's statements, we're evaluating, right now we're working on our evaluation of the superintendent. We have done a self-evaluation for the board, and I think those comments, if you can hang on to those, Ms. Fisher, are more appropriate for when we discuss our self-evaluation.
Okay. So I am hearing two different things, and I want to make sure that I have clear direction. I'm hearing one suggestion that I'm interpreting as, you do not make any directives today pending further workshops and training from the board. I'm hearing another suggestion that we have some ideas for workshops, but there may be some areas that you wish to give direction today. So if that could be clarified, I would appreciate that.
Comments from anyone? Um, okay, deep dive. We need to move forward. There's too much he said, she said, comments, things floating around. We've got to make some decisions. We have got to move forward as to what everyone is going to do, or not do, or whatever. So if we're going to set workshops in order to do our job with this evaluation, it needs to be as soon as possible. We have to advertise seven days, correct? Or four days? Well, I'm thinking if it's, I was thinking a special meeting, so if we did have to have comments, that we could, and that's up to the group. Are we looking at a workshop, or...
So the difference, as I understand your procedures, and bear with me because we're getting up to speed rather quickly, is that in a workshop, you have no public comment, and you do not take action.
Right.
In a special meeting, it's a regular business meeting with one or limited scope, limited topics. So if you want to have public comment, and you want to potentially take action by vote, by motion, then you would have to schedule it as a special meeting.
A special meeting. I don't want to prolong all this. I think we need to make decisions, and that's my opinion. I believe we should do a special meeting in order to come to some conclusions, make some decisions so that everyone can move on. Comments?
Yeah, I would like to recommend that we go around the table and find out what next steps board members would like to see, see if there's agreement on those next steps, see if any of those next steps involve direction to the superintendent today, and if anything involves a workshop, then that becomes a goal for us as a board, with the superintendent as part of the governance team. I would like to hear, before we talk about a special meeting or scheduling workshops, what it is that people need to hear and learn and understand to do our jobs better as board members, and to provide appropriate direction to the superintendent. So I'm going to start, because I want to get the stuff on the table. Okay, so I put out my ideas for educational leadership, two workshops. Under professional, or, that was education leadership, under professional leadership. You know, the big problem we have is that we don't work well as a board, and we have a lot of misunderstandings and differences of opinion about roles, responsibilities, what's happening in the district. So personally, I would like to change our work schedule so that we have two four-hour workshops a month, one regular meeting, and one briefing a month. So we take our time away from regular meetings. We do the briefing that Ms. Gittens has suggested that go with the agenda, and we commit time as a board to doing workshops. Okay. Community leadership, I would like to see us have a workshop where principals come from each level to discuss the school's efforts at those levels, to involve community members, to look at, to see, research, or talk about best practices being used nationally in schools, to involve community members, and in Florida, and to find out what the thorns are specifically here. And Ms. Vaughn has referred to repeatedly our inability to draw the Hispanic community in, and that's a thorn. But what are people doing nationally, what are they doing in Florida? What have we attempted to do here, what has worked, not worked? And then, at the same time, district staff efforts to target communications and solicit input, and again, best practices, what's being done nationally, what's being done in Florida? What is our plan, what's worked, and where do we go forward? With respect to executive leadership, so, I'm looking, let me flip this over. So we're talking about consistency and timeliness of communications, compliance, culture of openness. So I think this board needs to see when we're going to talk about stuff going forward. So we're going to have an internal auditor. When are we going to meet with the internal auditor? Let's get it on the calendar for now until November. When are we going to do our district strategic plan updates? When are we going to talk about initiatives in each of these areas, as well as each area of the strategic plan? Let's schedule those. And let's schedule a workshop that we really need to have about communications protocol, because we have no communications protocol. And the superintendent has given us a draft, but we haven't had an opportunity to respond to it. And I think until we have an opportunity to talk about it, we are going to have difficulty communicating with one another as a board. So those are my ideas for next steps. I don't know whether you agree with them or not, but I want them out there, and I'd love to hear what you all think are next steps.
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Fisher and just go around.
Okay, so then, I'm not going to repeat what Mrs. Morgan has said, but I agree with that. I think that we do need to have the workshops. I really feel like our big stumbling block is the fact that we as a board, and it's clear in statute what our responsibility is. But as I looked at the evaluations, I see, you know, there's one side and the other. And I'm asking you, how do we get all on the same train? Because that's the only way we can do the work of this district. And we are six months into this...
Storming.
Storming, well, segment, and unfortunately, there is still storming, and that's a little bit out of the ordinary. I've been in this district 40 years, I have never seen it like this. And I'm not saying it's the fault of any individual, but I think that as a board, it's incumbent on us to do whatever it takes to make it right. And until we are working together, we're just, you know, we can have all the workshops we want, and we can do all of that, but we're not, as a group, as a team, providing the superintendent with the direction that he deserves to have, so that then we can adequately evaluate, okay, we asked you to do this and this, because this is what our school community and our public community needs, and let's see how you did. But we haven't gotten that yet. So I think that we need to, I don't even know what the answer is, because this is a unique situation. But if we look at the statute again, if we look at our information from Florida School Boards Association, which is our best framework at this point, and then we decide, okay, based on this evaluation, we see that here are our top three issues. Now, we have not even, as a board, this board, established our priorities or our goals for this year, and we're halfway through it. And in order to be able to do that, we have to work together. And I'm sorry, I think I'm beating a dead horse, but I don't know what else to say at this point, and I'm not usually at a loss for those kinds of words. But I think that's what we need to do, in all fairness to everybody, and because of our responsibility to our students and our community.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
Okay, and again, I appreciate Mrs. Fisher's remarks, but I feel like we need to stay with the task at hand, which is to finish our evaluation of the superintendent. One of the things that I would say that we need to work on is the consistency of compliance with regulations. We have had quite, and the reason I say this is, we've had quite a list of audits and financial missteps. Now granted, I'm going to take the sales tax out of that equation, but I'm not going to list, I have the list if anybody's interested in it. I'm not going to list the things, but this is just happening too often. And I think we really need to tighten up on this, and we need to be more timely in providing information to the board, because frankly, I am tired of reading about things that are happening in the district in the news press before I get that information.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Atkins, do you care to comment?
Well, my comments related to that is that if you look at the, we're talking about some of the audit materials, I think overall, we have, we still have got a strong audit history, including the OPAGA audit that took place last year. That is, and we didn't even hit on the fact that we had a very successful accreditation, which is also an audit of some sense. The challenge this year has been the operations audit. I have opinions about that, that I'm not going to share at this time. I've shared them in the past, but we are moving forward and really endeavor to take any finding that we had from the last audit and address that finding, and many of them we already have. In the midst of this, we have another operations audit opportunity, but I think we're already ahead of that. We had our entry-level meeting, and in that, I think, you know, the auditor at that time provided us some insight relative to, you know, best strategies that we can do moving forward to resolve some of the findings from the past, and then some of the things that they're going to be looking at moving forward. Regarding communication, I have had a communication plan, of which, you know, you've seen drafts of, and you've, in your meetings, one-on-ones with me and Mr. Williams. I have had a, more of a final document that I've been sitting on for three weeks, and the reason for that is because I've come to realize that with that, I think we need, in the superintendent's office, and through our budget process coming up with FY '20, to restructure to meet the different expectations of this particular board. Honestly, I know that we are communicating faster and more than I've seen any administration do, and I can take you back 16, 17 years. This board has a different expectation, and we are making adjustments in terms of the structure of our administrative offices so that we can respond more effectively, and I want that to be a part of the overall recommendation that I bring forward to this board. Lastly, I think we have to understand that when media monitor police reports and things like that, that sometimes they are going to get things in advance of us. And then, in one situation I know of, our public records response was faster than a document coming to me, so a citizen pulled a document out of our public records prior to me receiving it, and our board attorney being able to provide you a memo relative to a legal situation. So there's one where, you know, I didn't get the communication either. And then I will tell you another little situation that we're addressing, but we had a situation at a bus stop, missing child, that was earlier. I learned about it from Wink. So when I learned about, but, in defense of our team, you know, I think that was not a, it was not a breakdown that occurred at the district level at all. That was about the manner of communication that came from the school, and also something that we have to work with, with law enforcement, so that we get notice of that. You know, and thankfully, in that particular situation, that was resolved. We had a student hiding in the woods. That happens sometimes with middle school students, but, you know, in this community, that can be breaking news. And, you know, fortunately, that young person was able to make it home. So having said all of that, I think that with the restructuring that we are planning to do with my cabinet, and also with our office, that is going to allow us to be much more responsive, to meet really a different expectation relative to communication, and I think that you will be happy with that. Also, we have the log, which is significant. I think that will be... I think that will be eye-opening in terms of the number of requests and communications that come through. And that's something that I'll be sharing with the board with the communication plan as well. And I think that's also an opportunity for the board to evaluate the requests that it makes and how much staff time do you want to be spending on these requests. We have started providing everything to everybody, and I think that's a positive thing. I think it's also a positive thing if we get to the piece in the agenda that we're going to come up on with going over the agenda review. That helps communication. So, there are things that we've already put in place that I think are making improvements there, but I think once we get a new structure in place, it will be even better.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan.
Okay. Well, what I would say is, to me, an evaluation is a tool for us to use to know where we need to grow and learn from that. And then, in saying that, I have to agree with Ms. Fisher and Ms. Morgan. We are so busy in our everyday lives. I mean, like today, we're here from nine to eleven o'clock, we'll be running all day. But the time that we spend together as a group and discussing what we need to do and what our goals are are really not enough. And I do believe that if we were able to increase that, we could come up with a better plan of direction of what we need to see. But I just don't think we're there yet.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens.
Okay. One of the comments, based on what the superintendent said, and I've heard this a couple of times about this particular board. My thought on that is that every two years, we have an opportunity to have this particular board change. So, going forward, we need to look at things that are not germane to this particular board or the last board or the next board, but all boards going forward with the nugget being what's best for children. We cannot continue every two years when someone new comes on to say, okay, well, what does this board want and how do they communicate? We need to find that sweet spot of communication, of boardsmanship. And I personally feel that we've been through training, we can go through more training, but I, at times, I feel like the training is not so much for the unifying, but just to let those of us that are new know what we're supposed to be doing. And I just had, you know, to say that. Communication is from the top down. And even though we are the governing board, communication in the district, in my mind, starts with the superintendent. So, if it's not flowing to all the areas or flowing as it should, then there is an issue and we need to fix it. Working together as a team means that we agree to disagree. It means that if you leave this table and we say the meeting is over and you didn't get what it is that you thought we should do, that we still walk out of this room as adults and professionals and with children in mind first. So, we need to look at how can we, again, agree to disagree? We're going to win some, we're going to lose some. Right now, we need to focus on what is it, come together, that we need to see happen for this district, boil down to the superintendent and his direction to the rest of the district. So, I think we need to, sooner than later, have whatever workshops or special meeting to get this underway. We can't keep kicking the ball down the road and expecting things to happen. We need to move.
Thank you. Ms. Patrika.
And I think that that just sort of nicely dovetails into my suggestion that we have increased training in the areas of what are our responsibilities, what are the superintendent's responsibilities and ethics. And I understand that, you know, that we've had that training. And two and a half years into my term on this board, I continue to have that training and I continue to learn new things every time I sit through a training. But it's difficult for me to have this conversation regarding the superintendent's evaluation. It feels like we're doing it in a vacuum because this is a team. And so, we really do need to evaluate ourselves at the same time we're evaluating the superintendent. So, I share Ms. Gittens' comments that this really does need to be done sooner rather than later. And then, the only other question or concern that I have with regard to opportunities moving forward, there was a suggestion that we increase the number of minorities in specific segments of our workforce. And I would want very specific legal advice with regard to the development of equal protection and what we are and are not permitted to do with regard to hiring policies in that area.
Thank you. So, I'm going to attempt to summarize. From my, from what I'm hearing, I do not hear a consensus to move forward with any type of direction to the superintendent today. What I hear is that you prefer to meet again, to gather more information, to perhaps see the communication plan that is coming forward, to hear from HR and from diversity departments around what are those steps that are currently ongoing in order to know if there are things that need to be improved upon. Is that correct?
I heard several of us prioritize board self-evaluation and training before that.
Yes, ma'am.
And how we take those substantive steps without dealing with much of what's been discussed here.
Thank you. And that was, my next comment was going to be, before those workshops take place, I heard from several members that you would like to have an additional time to work together to make sure that you are clear in the direction in terms of training and what your responsibilities are. Is that correct?
Okay. Two things on that. Aren't we already on the books for more training? There was.
We are. And let me just say that with.
And we'll think more about it.
We can add, in listening to what we're saying, we can add more workshops with the process that we instituted with the agenda review. I have been working with staff to rearrange things so that we don't have a situation where we have a two o'clock meeting and nothing until six. So, that is in the process. I will go back with them and include some of these other workshops and things and discuss with staff how we can, and the superintendent, how can we add these things in there in a timely manner? So, I think that's, my first priority is to work with them to get that done.
That was just a question. What I was going to say is, I think we have a pretty clear idea of what we're doing right here, right now. And that is, we are giving as a board our suggestions, differing as some of them may be, our suggestions about moving forward. And what I see is that Ms. McClung is going to, there's a draft of this consensus next step that you're going to be putting together. And that I would suggest that when we get that draft, as we've done in the past, that we look at it, that we maybe send suggestions to her, what we would like to see tweaked, what we would like to see added, something that was forgotten. And then, we can work from there. But at least that way, we are going to, it will be a document that we as a board have constructed. It's not something that's artificially pulled from somebody else's view of what we were saying.
And can I suggest then, because we already said our next step would be to come up with action statements regarding this evaluation? Okay? We see, we've gleaned, these are the areas. Now, what is an action statement? This will be done by such and such and such. So, perhaps when you send out the draft with some instructions of, you know, starting to write some action statements in our view, that way we can kind of concretize it a little bit when we get together. If everybody looks at the items that you send out and say.
Yes, ma'am.
How does this look in an action sentence? And with some instruction.
Yes, ma'am, I'd be happy to do that. With the caution that before setting the action step, you may need to hear from those, the people from the workshops.
Right, right. And we'll time that out properly.
So that you have the proper background information and data from which to develop that, which I'm hearing as a goal, basically.
Yes.
All right. Well, I thank you for your time and attention today. I will move forward with the recommendations that you have made. I'll send that document out to you early next week. I'm going to Golden Apple tonight, so it will not get done tonight.
And then, my next step after we receive that will be to work with staff and the superintendent to schedule the things that you have brought up in the workshops.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So, I turn it back to the chair for the agenda review. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Ladies and gentlemen, if you will all turn to the agenda review, the agenda on board One of the things, one of our goals on this agenda review in the future, and thank you to Ms. Patrika, she did that, in her review of the agenda items, she sent an email that said item one point whatever, two point whatever is what she had a question about. I know we're not quite there yet with everyone. The goal is to get there that before we're at this meeting, we have an idea of what you have questions with. I spoke with the superintendent about that and that way we can even kind of direct which staff needs to be here rather than taking up all of their time to be here for the whole thing. So, if we will go to the agenda for May 7th, six o'clock meeting. And I think our first order is consent items, executive services, superintendent, you want to call whomever or do we have, we can do it this way. Are there any issues or questions or concerns from any of the board members concerning consent item one? There being none? Consent item two, D2? Okay. Let's move on to academic services. Do you want to?
Yeah, we'll have Dr. Creel come up and quickly go through those items.
Good morning. How are you?
Good morning. Are there any questions? I'll just do the same regards to what you had. Are there any questions regarding the career dual enrollment articulation agreement? This is an ongoing process that we do on an annual basis.
And if, I would like to suggest that when you are, you know, presenting these, if you just say if it's a renewal or if it's something new, I think that kind of helps because if it's a renewal, people should know already that it's out there. And thank you for that.
So, is, any other questions? Okay, so it's a renewal.
Any. What's that?
It's a renewal.
It's a renewal. Okay, and go ahead.
The approval of budget amendment at Head Start, your early Head Start grant. Questions?
Oh, we do have one. Hold on. Yes.
We did have a question, please. The transfer of funds, it was to Open Doors preschool for a rubberized playground, I believe?
That's right.
So, do we do that for private entities?
That is the childcare partnership grant, which we have. It's from the Department of Health and Human Services through the Office of Head Start. We applied for a grant, we're in the fifth year of that grant. And what we, what the purpose of it is to try to raise the quality of childcare in the community to equal that of our early Head Start program that we have within the district. And so, those grant funds are for those purposes.
So, the individual private owner would request those funds from us?
Well, they, one of the things is they are required to meet the Head Start performance standards and safety standards. And so, that's one of the things that when we go in and consult with them, we share, these are the things that you need to meet the same quality that early Head Start expects of any early Head Start program. So, yes, we are the grantee for that and we do have contracts with five community partners. Open Doors is one of them.
And then, I'm sorry, one more question, please. Because I'm trying to understand all this.
I know, it's a little different.
And then, as far as making sure that there's always a minimum of forty percent of children who receive subsidies, who keeps track of all that? We do?
We do that.
Okay, thank you. Is that on?
Yes.
I'll let Jeannie stay here in case there are any questions on the approval of the budget amendment to early Head Start childcare partnership grant for FY2019. You may recall, these are the grants that Jeannie spoke about several weeks ago. Okay. And then, seeing as there are none, the fourth item is the Florida Department of Education revision to the course code directory. Any questions about that?
They're going to do it anyway. Thank you. Okay, and next we have human resources?
No, business services.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped business services. And who do we have?
We have Kelly Letcher and also, I think, Mark Santiago is going to come up and address the first item, which is official property records.
Good morning.
Dr. Atkins. The agenda item for the property records, typically about once a month, we will present to the board items to be written off of the property record. Typically, these are items that have either gone obsolete as determined by our IT department or items that are notified as beyond repair. Typically, beyond repair items have to be documented either by a department like IT or transportation that would inform the school or the department that their item is no longer able to be repaired due to cost or lack of availability of parts. So, the item that we have before you for this agenda has five, six items that are, have been identified as beyond repair and the rest of them have been identified as obsolete items that were removed from records. Any questions about that?
Go ahead.
So, okay, it's me. So, the obsolete items, are those the ones that you then take and sell off?
Yes. Typically, if the item has any kind of salvage value after we've write it off, then we have a process to either sell it through GOV deals or if they're IT items, sometimes we will liquidate those through a wholesaler that's able to go ahead and take those items and give the district some funds back for that and that goes back to the general fund.
One thing I want to mention is, I don't know if it was in discussion with you, what, that these items, that there are students that are, some are interns, that come in and work on, I think it was Kelly told us that, I thought was very interesting, we use intern students to come in and refurbish and to clean up the equipment that we are going to sell. So, that's a training piece right there and kudos to you for doing that. The fiscal impact in that part, this is budget source, and it says the action reduces the capital fixed assets by the additional cost that we paid for it, correct?
Right. The amount of money that gets written off is the amount that we, the acquisition cost.
So, that's that three hundred and twenty-five.
Right.
And then, the value.
Appreciable value that was left on the books at the time of the write-off. So, if it was down to zero, typically our equipment, regular equipment, has a ten-year useful life, so we depreciate over ten years. Computer equipment, electronic equipment, we give it a five-year life. So, if it's down to zero, that item has gone past that either five or ten-year period. If they show some book value, that means it didn't quite get all the way there to the point where it needed to be written off.
So, this total, this two thousand two eighty-five sixty-six is, it says the net book value of the total amount of equipment that you're looking to get rid of. So, is that what we gain in selling it?
It isn't really a gain, it's more of a loss to us because we didn't, that item didn't actually make it all the way.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I see, till it's, till it's end.
Right, right.
So, how is that offset with us selling it, like on our?
Well, it really is more of a book transaction. It isn't really dollars that we would specifically lose. We just expected these particular items to either make it five or ten years and they didn't. So, we write those off the books, but then the game that we get back is if we were able to sell it.
And we sell them. And that's what I was talking about, the sales amount that we get in. And I think you're coming up to answer that.
I came to elaborate a little bit on that process. So, with our technology equipment, what we do is, as you mentioned, we use interns and we refurb that equipment. We either use that equipment in another role or we donate some of that equipment to some of our charter schools. some of that equipment to some of our charter schools, for example, and then the rest is either sold or recycled. When we, so to give you an idea of what that means coming back into the district, last year, our net revenue was around a half million dollars.
Very good.
In terms of assets.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
It is the, the goal of Mr. Davis to hopefully get that number over seven hundred thousand dollars, and with the eventual goal of going over a million dollars, and then we have, we feel that we can use those dollars brought in to target compensation for our employees, specifically, or support staff and teachers. So that is also part of that initiative, and we think if we can get the word out, that we can increase revenue in that particular, in that particular initiative, and, and it will help us in our efforts of, regarding recruitment and retention.
Okay, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Anything on, any of the other items there? Capital report, or budget amendment?
Good morning.
Yes, good morning.
I'm Lauren Kuschwan, Director of Food and Nutrition Services, in regards to F2. This is a renewal for our produce bid, but it is an increase in expenditure that is not with the use of general funds, and it is due to our increase in participation and our initiative to offer more local and fresh produce to all of our students.
Okay.
So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. So Lauren, do you re-budget that every year?
Yes.
Do you look at what you actually are purchasing?
Yes.
For each, okay, for all the schools? Thank you.
Yeah, well, we have a new initiative, our newer initiative to offer more produce, so we have to reevaluate what we're spending every year due to what we're serving every year.
And is that a mandate, or is that just our initiative?
That's just...
What you want to...
Good budget practice?
No, no, I'm talking about the produce part.
Oh, that's our initiative.
Okay.
It was something, when we were looking at, and actually, we started talking with, with Sonny Stolmacki and Lauren, about, you're looking at the dollars that we actually have left over, that we put towards some of these kitchen refurbishment, you know, projects. But one of the things that we can do with those federal dollars is increase the amount of fresh fruits and vegetables. Sometimes that may be a little bit more costly, but the benefit is that you've got these items locally sourced, and giving our students free fresh fruits and vegetables. So, I'm, you know, happy to report that this has increased in expenditures over the years, and so, and they're also relatively popular items in some cases.
They are very popular items, and not only are we serving more to our students, we're, we've also increased our salad bars, our vegetable bars, and our fruit bars as well, which is all fresh, none of that is frozen or canned items, so that's been an increase in fresh produce as well.
Very good.
And I will tell you, because I go to lunch quite often, and I see a lot of the children going for the salads.
Yeah.
So, and I know that they can do deliveries every day, and so it's always fresh. So that's good.
It is, and those vegetable bars and fruit bars have given them more of an option to choose what they're going to eat, rather than you don't have a choice, so they take something to throw away. This has been an initiative to decrease our rate as well.
That's good. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes. Have you all had a chance to listen to Ms. Kuschwa's podcast?
Podcast.
Because you will learn everything you need to know about the passion that goes into feeding the children of Lee County, if you listen to her.
Thank you.
Podcast, and all about this, I think we're now spending more on fresh produce than processed cheese, so that's a good thing.
A lot more.
A lot more.
It won't last as long. Okay, thank you so much, and thank you for what you do. And just in the sake of time, we are looking at ten fifty-two, we need to move on rather quickly, as there are other events that individuals have to leave for, so just go ahead.
Really quick, the budget amendment and the capital report are monthly reports that you will see, and I explained last time what they were. If you want me to go into detail, I can, or if you have any questions, I can just answer those.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just before you break for the eleven, I would, just like one minute.
Oh, well, I was, I was gonna mention you guys in a minute, and I apologize for not doing that earlier, but I will get to it. We're almost finished, is there anything else, just looking down the list, that anyone has on any of the other consent items? We can just look at it in general. Is there any other?
There was a question that came up relative to the administrative appointment on the Human Resources Agenda, whether or not that was a, a new position. That is simply filling in an existing vacancy that had been vacant since earlier in the year. And they had actually, I think, selected an applicant in January, but the applicant was not available until May, and so that appointment is coming forward.
Anything else, any other questions, or any others? Is that all the questions that came in to you as well?
Yes.
I got a question about the radios.
Okay.
Did that.
Go ahead.
I didn't get that one, but we can answer that one surely.
I'm just, it just seemed like a huge increase to me, and, and there was a list of schools, and I saw that list, I'm just wondering about why such a big increase, and also...
You want to tell us which number?
Shelter schools were listed.
Right.
H1.
Okay.
Shelter schools were listed, and I'm wondering if we're getting any reimbursement from the county, because I assume that's for clear communication during a hurricane.
Okay, um, oh, and I, I was told that we do need to announce our names, so Dwayne Alton, Executive Director. So the item is for not just shelter schools, but other schools as well. And what this does is it allows the EMS and police radios to work inside of our facilities. Right now, we have a challenge where, you know, some of those buildings, if you go in with your cellphone, you can't get a signal. Same thing happens to our police and medical responders when they, when they enter our buildings. So we're bringing this increase...
Just on that point, real quick, this was an issue that, when we were looking at safety and security in the buildings, actually Chief Diggs raised this as a concern, yeah.
Right, this has been the highest priority from all of the law enforcement agencies thus far. And the increase you see is because we are going from a, if you recall, last year, when this contract was approved, it was prior to the sales tax referendum, it was also prior to completion of the budget, and also prior to receiving grant money for safety. So this increase is because we went from a very long-term, just do this shelter school project, to a three-year, do, make sure that these work in all schools project. So that's why you see the increase. That is two hundred and eighty thousand of that, for now, is funded from District Capital Millage, six hundred and fifty thousand from grants, and the remainder from capital sales tax revenue.
Do I see that, do I see that broken out? The, what part is referendum dollars?
He, it's, two hundred and eighty thousand is district capital, the six fifty is from a grant, so the remainder would be from sales tax.
One of the comments I made on a later agenda item, Dr. Atkins, was that it was broken out as referendum item, and that's super helpful for me to see. So if, like, I probably wouldn't have even had to have asked the question, if I had seen in their referendum item, I would have known exactly what this was for. So if we could have that break out for future expenditures, that would be super helpful.
And if you'd like, we can provide that breakdown to the board prior to Tuesday's meeting, if you'd like.
That's fine, I just, I just wanted to know what it was for, I get it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I do want to mention under HR, I had spoken to the superintendent about, with administrative appointments, and we can address this later, I, I feel that on the day that they are going to be voted on in an action meeting, that the person should be invited after the action has occurred, and not that anything, you know, may happen, but just kind of as procedure, that we would vote on them at this meeting, and introduce them at the next meeting, just in case. Not that they couldn't start after they are approved, but just to, anyway, and we had discussed that, and if we have issues about it, we'll discuss them in our workshop. I apologize profusely to our new attorneys, we were so busy trying to get started and get moving. We have our new, I'm not even going to attempt to say the firm, but we have Mitchell Bierman is it correct, and Alan Gabriel, and they are going to be our board attorneys, the firm that they represent, and they can explain to...
Sure, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you very much, and thank you for the welcome, and it's been very exciting to begin to get up to speed. We jumped into this quickly. The firm is Wyserota Healthman Cole and Bierman. For twenty-eight years, the firm has been representing local governments, government entities, public sector entities, and we think of that as a specialty, just like corporate law, because government entities have very particular needs, and a very particular set of laws and things that they go by, and we pride ourselves on having an unmatched expertise in that field, as well as, I call it the Swiss Army knife approach. Every, every legal discipline that you would need, hopefully, is, we, we have people who are pretty expert in. We have a labor group, we have a public sector litigation group, we have a real estate group, we have a land use group, public education, public finance, et cetera. So you will probably see Alan most often. We have another attorney that's going to be working closely with Alan, Chris Saunders, and Chris will come with me, not to the meeting on Tuesday, but to the next meeting. I'll cover both of your business meetings in, in the month of May, and I will always be available, as will every attorney in our firm, so that if you have a labor question, you can ask the labor. We, we also, we even have, as some was mentioned today, and it's relevant, the founding director of the Miami-Dade County Commission on Ethics, who's an attorney with our firm, and is an expert in government ethics. So if you, you know, you are mandated by Florida law to take a certain amount of ethics hours every, every year, and he performs that for a lot of our public sector clients, but also just the day-to-day questions that come up. And so we hope to be able to provide all of the resources that you need during the time that we're here, and, you know, we're very proud and very excited to be part of this team and part of the efforts that you're making, and I have to say that notwithstanding what, what people, maybe jokingly, told me, I, I think that this board actually...
We know.
The, the board actually functions very well, very politely, and very harmoniously, and I can tell that everybody here has, above all, the interests of the students of this district at, at heart, and, and that comes through very strongly, and so it's very exciting for us to be able to serve that purpose as well.
Thank you. And Alan, would you like to say a word?
Only to the extent, the reason that I'm not going to be here the rest of the month is that I actually had vacation scheduled before we secured this position.
That's not allowed, Jim. It's in the contract.
I had, I told Mitchell that if, if in fact we're going to do this work, then I have to take that time off, my wife would not forgive me. So that is the exact reason. But we, we are always available, we have our cellphone numbers, our emails, we, I sleep with that phone next to me.
You sleep?
I just, not a lot. Point being simply, is if there's an issue, we're available. If I don't know the answer, I have someone in the firm that I can get the answer for you. We have that kind of ability to do that. And if we don't know it, we'll find out how to get you the answers. So we look forward to the opportunity. I actually do some schoolwork for the Broward School System, so I have experience with, I, I do know there's a statute that relates to schools and I, and other things, so, just so, you're not, you know, it's, it's not unexpected, I mean, this is really a field at home, it's no different than what I've been accustomed to. A lot of our other cities and our other government agencies are no different than you, so you may think you're unique, but truthfully, all of our governments in the state of Florida all act and follow the same basic laws. They all have the same discussions that you are having today. To the point that Mitchell was taking, Robert comes too, that's our expert on, on all kind of ethics. I bring him to my meetings, and he does a whole presentation explaining the statutes and what they are, and will sit down and actually answer questions if you have those. So that, we have that opportunity, and we look forward, I look forward to being able to help address and help move you forward with what you're trying to accomplish on behalf of the children in the community.
Thank you so much, and I know we all have to go. I believe we accomplished what we came for, the evaluation process, agenda review, and, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Well, I just had a few, just some quick updates that I wanted to give you in this environment, since many of us are not doing the one-on-ones. These will be quick. We had a number of emails relative to the Fort Myers High School situation, and so the district has responded to that, and we started responding to that quickly through Dr. Freeman's office. Dr. Freeman has been involved, Fernando Vasquez has been involved, Dr. Pruitt has been involved, Dr. Bohatch has been involved. There's been a lot of involvement, a lot of time spent in communication at this point. I know that there's a parent that's going to meet with Dr. Freeman and Dr. Pruitt, and then there is a request for a board member to be present as well in that meeting. But that's where we are there, and because you've all gotten those emails, I wanted you to be aware. Second thing is we...
I'm sorry, Dr. Atkins, could you say the last step again?
She is meeting with Dr. Freeman. Dr. Freeman is the appropriate level to make a final decision or outcome relative to, because she's the direct supervisor of middle school and high school principals, and of course, Dr. Pruitt has been involved from a human resources perspective, and Mr. Vasquez has been involved, because there was a, an investigation conducted at the full, school level, and he listened to how that, how that was conducted, and to make sure that it was done in the correct manner.
Thank you.
So, so that is a meeting that is being set up by Dr. Freeman as we speak.
You said that a board member is going to sit in?
I said a parent requested that.
Okay, no board member would be sitting in, because the proper way to do it would be through the chain of command, and the board is the last.
I would, I would agree with that, but, you know, that, I think, would be the prerogative of the board, but that would, that is, would be very atypical if that were the case. I, my responsibility there would be to make sure that my staff is available, and so I've asked Dr. Freeman to head that meeting, and Dr. Pruitt to be supportive.
So do you, do you need some kind of consensus from us, that that's not appropriate board behavior, or like what? Having a board member sit in on a meeting like that is, I don't feel comfortable having a board member there.
I don't either. It's not our job, and I don't think it's fair to staff to have a board member sit in when they're doing their job. So I don't support that as, as appropriate work of the...
Well, I think the superintendent was just requesting, saying that that was a parent request, but...
It was, it was a parent request.
Yeah, it, it wouldn't be appropriate. I, I don't see where we'd be inappropriate if it was just a request. I mean, it's not that a board member is going to be running the meeting, or whatever, just, and, and I, I think in this situation that it, I think it will be diffused easier to go ahead and just have the meeting, and, you know, the board member's not making any decisions. Yeah.
I disagree.
Yeah.
It's harder for, it's harder for staff to have a conversation when one of us are there, because regardless of what anybody thinks, they look at us as being, we're here. So for them to have that clear and concise conversation, it's, it's very much, and it's not that this person is in danger, or anything like that, which I think we should make clear, because it sounds like something really terrible has happened, and I just, it sets a precedence.
Yeah, well, in essence, I mean, something could come out of that meeting that we would have to vote on, so.
Okay.
I don't think that we...
So it wouldn't be appropriate, then, for a board member to participate in an investigatory type of meeting, which is what I'm taking is what that meeting is?
Exactly.
If, if in fact there is an opportunity or potential that it would come before the board as a whole, that precludes a citizen from asking a board member, you know, to sit and meet with them and have a conversation outside of that realm.
Yes.
Okay. So are we clear on that? Okay.
So anyway, Dr. Freeman will be conducting that meeting along with Dr. Pruitt. The second thing, earlier this morning, I was out at a bus stop, six twenty this morning at Alvin and Beauty Street, which is in Lehigh Acres, with one of our local media stations, but we're talking about the many types of things that we're doing within the school district, and working with different municipalities to make bus stops more safe. I'm going to provide you with some talking points, and also a table that outlines the many, many things that staff has been involved in with our other cities and municipalities up to this point, along with some of the other plans... up to this point, along with some of the other plans that we have moving forward, particularly over the course of the summer, where we're looking at our student proximity-based assignment, and also the education, you know, we're going to have a mass education campaign that we're going to roll out with the start of the school year. So I wanted you to be aware of that. And then finally, just a, a quick update, executive positions, is something that Mr. Pratt has been working with our Human Resources Division in terms of refining how we advertise, recruit, and retain. And I think those suggestions are, are going to, to really come, I think we're going to see some good results come out of that effort, because I think that, you know, some of the ways that we've been advertising and recruiting in that particular area can, can certainly be looked at, and we can, we can take advantage of his expertise. So he's been doing that, and he is going to come speak to the board, I think, next, next month, I believe, we're, we're trying to get him scheduled to come talk to you about his efforts within operations and, and also other places within the, the school district as it relates to operations. And that's all my comments.
Okay. Anything else? Good to the order? Yeah, I just have one question regarding that. So is there any inclusion of an effort to look at our in-house talent in, in terms of succession and enhancing their ability to progress to a higher...
He's coming.
Yes.
Yes, if I could address the board.
Well, we finally get a chance to meet you.
Yes, good morning.
So please state your name.
My name is John Pratt. I am one of the managing directors at Newport. It used to be Newport Board Group, but we're still learning how to do boards ourselves, so, you know. So I have spent quite a bit of time now, about 35 days, looking at the operations here at the school district and talking to the people. One of the things I learned from running a very large division, seven billion, so about the, you know, not quite the school district, but, but pretty close, is that the people know exactly what they're looking for in terms of a leader. And so when we look at, looking for people here, there's three categories. Dr. Pruitt is, is ready to send out a letter with, with Dr. Atkins to the current sitting principals and see if there's anybody, because I think you asked, is there any input coming from, you know, the school districts, you know, anybody inside, you know, looking for a different role, or, or has a friend that has a need for a role like this. At the same time, we've, I've contacted Gwinnett County Schools in Atlanta, I'm familiar with them, I worked with them back at IBM, and looking at their model and their profile and how they were able to attract and retain people. Here, I've taken a, a book of 80 resumes, and, and we deselected some for a lot of reasons. One was a PMP certification, they didn't have green belt, black belt, you know, all this stuff. And that's great, it's just that when you talk to the people, so I talked to Scott Rickenbacker, I said, "What are you looking for in a leader? I'm looking for somebody that don't have to train for 15 to 20 months." So, and you, as you dig down in there, you, we found some really interesting people. We found a minority woman business owner in Chicago that managed the transit authority, that managed HUD, that managed all this stuff, the politics, the understanding of legal matters and so forth. And so I think last week, or this week earlier, right, Dr. Atkins, and, and the cabinet got a chance to interview her online. Yesterday I found, or yesterday I interviewed a gentleman named Mark Pierce from Naples, who was an outstanding candidate, and could even be considered as the chief, right? And so we're just changing the model a little bit, in order to have people come from different walks of life. Within HR, I'm working with Suzette and the team to make sure we have a LinkedIn advocate, so somebody that's really representing what we're looking for, as opposed to, you know, across the board, right? And it's, this is the school of hard knocks, you know, that I came from, trying to find and retain the best talent for the district.
Very good, and, and one of the things I wanted to mention, we have a lot of career changers that have come into education, and asking the principals and all that, and getting that to that level, even though we don't want to lose teachers, but there are people out there that possibly have that experience that we could look at.
Absolutely. My, my experience is if you go always inside, you don't get some of the creativity and progression, and if you go always outside, you know, you know, then people don't feel like there's an opportunity, right? So it's a blend, and I think maybe your experiences provides the same.
Okay. Thank you so much, and thank you for what you're doing, and any other...
I've got two things.
Okay.
For good to the order, I'd like to propose with legislative session ending Saturday that we have a workshop regarding next year's legislative priorities sooner rather than later. Obviously, we need to get the way-of-work thing handled before we do that, but, but I don't want to be making those decisions three months before the beginning of the next legislative session. I would like us to be able to be out there talking about this all summer, all fall, and all winter, heading into next legislative session. And finally, what, what are we doing in these meetings? Specifically, the last 45 minutes, I sent my questions into the entire board. Should I send them to Dr. Atkins, and then Dr. Atkins compiles the list and gives it to us before the meeting? I just, I'm not, I'm still not, I don't think any of us are really clear on what we're doing in these, this portion of the agenda.
Okay, the, the main purpose of reviewing and getting the information about questions ahead of time is to shorten what we have to do when we're here. So since we were sending out to all of the board members before, it may trigger or answer a question that they already have. So my thought is we copy Susan and the, and all the board members, and also Dr. Atkins, so he can move forward to get the answers ready, Susan then, and can say, "These are the things that we need, that we're going to discuss." So I comment quickly on anybody on that? Is it okay to just continue sending it, your questions out?
Madam Chair, I, I don't know if I misheard, but if the practice is for every member to send a list of questions to every member, I would discourage that practice.
Okay, okay.
I, I would suggest that every member send his or her questions to the superintendent, and the superintendent can prepare, if, if he wants to prepare, prepare written response to all of the questions.
Or just be prepared to answer.
Or to be prepared to answer them.
Right.
But there is some danger that by sending all of your questions to each other, you're communicating specific, out of the sunshine about items that will come before you.
Okay.
So I would, I would discourage that.
Thank you. You're already on the case.
So I'd like to propose that I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask for written responses to those questions, but if you could provide us as a board a list of those questions before we walk into this meeting, so that I know what to expect when I sit down at the table. And also, I think that will give you an opportunity to not waste staff time to have people here if there's no question on an item. Does that make, am I making sense?
Well, that's, that's what I, that was what we had said, yeah, that he would be able to say, "We don't need anybody here for this or that." Okay.
And as long as there's enough time to do so.
Right, and there may not always be time to get all that information prior to...
So we get the agenda a week in advance, so then is there a specific time certain in which we should get the questions to you?
Well, we get it on the, the Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Right. We meet on the Thursday, so.
That's it.
It's a quick turnaround, and it may be generic questions that, you know, just trigger something, and we get the full answer here in the meeting. Is that okay? All right. Everyone fine? Thank you so much to everyone, we appreciate your attendance.